I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Planning Commission. It is Monday, January 11th of 2021, and it is 6:30 PM. Darcy, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Commissioner Pack?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Commissioner Murphy? Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Schrodl?
Here.
Commissioner Lopes?
Here.
Commissioner Pascoe is absent.
Very good. Thank you, Darcy, very much. All right, do we have any public out there in Zoom land that might want to make a comment on any topics outside the agenda? Do we see any, Darcy?
I have a hand up from Ann Muir.
Here, okay, great. Wonderful, welcome, Ann. You want to bring her in and we can ask what she'd like to bring up. There she is, Ann, you're still muted.
I'm sorry, I'm just part of the Park Avenue Committee, so.
Oh, very good. Did you want to bring anything up besides what's on the agenda this evening?
No, I'm sorry, just the agenda, sorry.
Great, well, thank you so much for joining us. Anyone else out there that would like to make a public comment? Okay, I think we can move forward with our study session, which I believe is going to begin with the Park Avenue Committee project. And Lorraine Gonzalez, you're on.
Sorry, so I'm going to jump in. I've been working with Lorraine on the Park Avenue project. And I am hoping that Darcy can bring over both Ann Muir and Valerie Chapman. Valerie Chapman was the Chair of our Park Avenue Community Advisory Committee. And Ann Muir was the Vice Chair. So they're going to be helping today in the presentations that we'll be giving. So first, I wanted to acknowledge that I believe that all of you did receive an email from MABA that was talking about this particular project. And so a little bit later, when we talk specifically about the development and design standards, we'll talk about that email and kind of our interface and working specifically with businesses and community and the commercial property owners. So today, I'm gonna give you a slideshow. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and we're gonna get this presentation going. Okay, so I think everybody sees. Hold on, let me see if we can do this. This is just where, tonight, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to talk about the Park Avenue Community Project. We should be able to touch base with the Planning Commission and provide them background that was provided to the Board of County Commissioners in early December. And then at the end of the presentation, we'll talk about the direction that the County Commissioners gave and then the next steps that will occur. So it's kind of a quick overview of what we're gonna be doing tonight. So for this project, both Lorraine Gonzalez and myself were staff for this project. And then, as I said before, Valerie Chapman was the Chair of the Community Advisory Committee and Ann Muir was the Vice Chair. This particular project actually was rooted in deep community engagement. And so we had an advisory committee that started with 18 members. You can see the different members kind of across different sections and different representations. This is a project and you may or may not remember, some of you may not have been on the Planning Commission at the time, but the last time that we touched base with you was in July of 2019. So what I'm gonna do tonight is I'm gonna provide you with a little context because this project has been underway for a while. It's been a project that's been on our long-range planning work program for the past two years, and we have been working with the community on that. So I'll provide some context. Ann will touch on the guiding principles that were developed in conjunction with the Community Advisory Committee. Valerie is going to talk about the framework plan. And then we're all going to touch on the development and design standards, the implementation items, and then finally, as I said, kind of the outcomes from the BCC discussion and the next steps. Get you all sort of grounded in the area that we're talking about. The Park Avenue Community Project was focused in one-half mile around the Park Avenue Light Rail Station. So this is an area that's on the very kind of northern tip of unincorporated Clackamas County. On this map, you can kind of see the areas of gray at the top. Those are actually in the city of Milwaukee. And then the areas that are colored in different colors, those are the light yellows are a single-family residential. The oranges are more of a multifamily residential. And the pink area in the center is C3, a general commercial. The Park Avenue Community Project came about through a variety of venues. But most importantly, the outcomes of this project really align closely with board goals, the Board of County Commissioner goals, goals related to the DTD strategic plan, as well as goals that have been outlined in the five components of the McLaughlin Area Plan. So there's a lot of different elements that kind of align together with other work that's underway. So a few items that really this project has been able to do is identify ways to increase opportunities for housing. The framework plan supports a healthy and active lifestyle. And it also really is focused on ways to stimulate development of workforce housing. And how do we get additional housing in this area? So it does complete a project on the long-range planning work program. And then finally, with respect to the existing McLaughlin Area Plan, it provides guidance to allow for development in commercial and mixed-use areas to really focus on those activity clusters targeted at targeted locations within the plan area. So it really kind of aligns with a variety of different plans that we have. Kind of, as I was just talking about, this project has a lot of history. Kind of, in essence, it can go back and can be tied to the McLaughlin Area Plan vision framework that where the majority of the work for that was done in 2010. Back in 2010, there was actually an initial effort to do a Park Avenue Neighborhood Station area that while that work was undertaken, it actually was never adopted. So really quick history of the last couple of years. We had, and actually, this is for the Phase Two part of the project. Before Phase Two started in 2019, we actually undertook Phase One. And that's when we came to you in July of 2019 and gave an overview of the Phase One. Phase One I touched on in the memo. And so it provides a kind of some quick background, but in Phase One, we did just an assessment of what was the community need out there? Was the community interested in actually implementing this project? And it also provided some base demographic information for the area. But with that, in July, I think it was June of 2019, the Board said, yes, go ahead with Phase Two. And this is what we're talking about tonight are the outcomes of Phase Two. So in August 2019, I see the Community Advisory Committee was appointed. We worked with the Community Advisory Committee. We met monthly with them from August 2019 all the way through November 2020. So as you know, there's a lot that went over the past year. But they did a lot of hard work. In March and April, with the advent of COVID, we had to quickly shift our approach. But the Community Advisory Committee, they were, they really stuck with us. We took a meeting or two to be able to become acquainted with Zoom. But then we pressed on and we were able to really do a lot of good work. So the Community Advisory Committee participated and were really the core of developing these guiding principles that Ann is going to talk about. They met through May and July to develop the framework plan alternatives. During those times, we had online open houses that kind of went in parallel and did some surveys to make sure that we were able to engage the broader community. And then all of that in August and November really came together to be able to develop these draft concepts for the development and design standards. Really, that is the point upon which we're really putting the framework plan into action. What kind of changes to the zoning development ordinance are needed to achieve this framework plan? So again, this slide here is to give you an idea of the area that we're talking about. Now, a few slides ago, I showed you a map. And it was a circle around the Park Avenue area. For the development and design standards, for the proposed changes that are coming out of this project, the proposed changes are really focused in both the general commercial area as well as the MR1 area. And so there are no proposed changes that fall in the single-family residential zones. So this kind of is an aerial looking up McLaughlin Boulevard. On the very south side is Courtney Road up to Park Avenue. So that's if you have an idea of what McLaughlin is, where we're talking about that half-mile basically goes from Park Avenue to Courtney. It's also buffered by Oatfield. And then to the west, I believe it's Linden Lane. So taking, yes?
Just a quick question. What was the, on that last slide, the divot, just out of curiosity on Oatfield? What was the big, like?
So that would be a single-family zone.
I see, okay. It was just, you're just going around it and not.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And so this kind of takes off the zoning, but you can kind of, you could practically see the fact that the general commercial is really more in the grayed-out area. But it kind of gives you a feel for what type of businesses and what type of activity is going on out in that area now. The half-mile is about 280 feet. One of the key things that this project looked at was how do we make this area more walkable? And so just to, so as a point of reference, as we think about urban design and creating good places for people to walk, they really are thinking about intersections more every 400 to 800 feet. But right now, really, the crossings, it's 280 feet. How far people have to go between signals? And here's another kind of visual to give you an idea of what this area looks like. What McLaughlin, this is traveling, believe it's south down McLaughlin. And so what we have there now, we actually, there is, as you may be familiar with, there are kind of large expanses parking lots. There are various types of commercial uses. General commercial really is our most wide-open zone. There are so many different types of uses that folks can do in that particular stuff. So with that, I'm going to actually shift the presentation over and let Ann speak to the guiding principles.
Thank you, Karen. So when we put together the work in on the guiding principles, it was a real hands-on community activity. We began within our own committee with people just bringing forth pictures, whether actual pictures or descriptions of what kinds of places they love to be. And so people shared pictures from around the area here, around Oregon City, Selwood, Amsterdam, you know, so people just brought ideas of what they loved about community gatherings. And as we worked with that and saw that and talked about the kinds of things we love, we came up with some sort of concepts of what we were looking for. And then we brought those, I mean, after three or four meetings with the committee, we brought all of those then to this, what you see here in this picture is this community meeting. And let the people do that too. So now we can go to the next slide, thanks. Yeah, so the, I just wanted to emphasize the amount of time and energy and real enthusiasm that went into these discussions to start out, to first start naming some general ideas about each guiding principle and then to enunciate exactly what we were looking for. And so as we put these principles together, as you see, I just, I won't read the whole thing, you can read them, increased employment opportunities and innovative business ventures, some new things that can happen along McLaughlin, we're all in that. The second guiding principle to increase the diversity and accessibility of housing choices that are adjacent then to the transit area. The third one to provide safe locations, crossings and connections for walking and biking, as you saw from the pictures and as you know, it's not a very walkable and safe place, that part of McLaughlin. The fourth thing to create, cultivate a heart and hub in a neighborhood activity. To, fifth, to treat natural systems as a benefit and integral part of the community. And sixth, to promote a healthy and resilient community. Now, these are the, these are the hopes and dreams that we put out there using these guiding principles kind of as plumb lines then as we talked and worked through other possibilities. But I wanted to remind you of, when we started and look, when you look at the picture, if you remember back a few slides there of McLaughlin and you, this part of McLaughlin, this farthest northern piece of the county, right there before, unincorporated county area, that part of McLaughlin is underdeveloped. It's, is characterized completely as blight areas. And as you go further south on McLaughlin, you even just as coming out of our half-mile radius, things get better pretty quickly. So I'd want you to keep in mind that this part of McLaughlin has a combination of underdevelopment, underused, blighted areas and incredible, incredible potential for, because of the transit station there and the trolley trail and a credible potential for building something new and nice and walkable. And the word that we really wanted in there is to promote healthy and resilient community. So we're, we admit that we have a vision that will look a lot different than what's there now. But that's, these were our guiding principles. And as we worked through, each time we looked at different parts of the foundational program and possibilities, we said, does it work? Does it, or is that going against providing safe locations? Or is that idea against promoting a healthy and resilient community? So we spent a lot of time on the guiding principles and they have taken us really nicely through this project.
So the next step of the process was developing the framework plan. But before I pass it over to Valerie, I did just want to comment on the fact that for the guiding principles, and as you saw in the picture, is that workshop was an in-person workshop that was held in February of 2020. But soon, we had to shift our different public engagement over to more online stuff. So, but I'm really glad we were able to at least have the one in-person workshop. So now I'm gonna pass it over to Valerie.
Good evening to everyone. So I live in this area, I want a framework where I am before I talk about the framework plan. I'm, I live about three blocks away from the MAC station in the corner of 25th and Evergreen Street. So this is a neighborhood, an area that I have lived in for over 38 years. So I have been part of a lot of the different efforts to develop, including the goal of bringing in the MAC line itself. And having lived here, I think I can say with a degree of honesty that one of the best things that ever happened to the corner of McLaughlin and Park Avenue was actually the MAC station. So what was there before? If you were not there, let me just tell you that it was, blight was probably a very good word to use for that particular area. So in doing the framework plan, we started out with some models that the consultants have put together for us. And they were great working with them, with Sarah. And we used models to try to think about if they reflected what we wanted as a community and reflected our guiding principles. We also had spent time, which was really nice. This was something that was missing in the previous effort to get a plan. And I think Karen mentioned that it hadn't been adopted. We spent time with the consultants walking this whole area. So we spent time actually looking at it and thinking about it and recognizing the topography, which is, which is very interesting. You know, if you know where the trolley trail is, where the trolley line ran, that was, you know, houses are oriented towards the trolley trail. That was the front yard. There's also a creek bed there and a hill that goes down from McLaughlin. So it's not an easy area. And so we wanted to take all of that into account. We are very aware that the people who use the trolley trail on a regular basis and see that is a wonderful access, not only to the MAC station, but along the corridor there and to the school and whatnot, did not want the trolley trail ruined by a lot of crossings. So they didn't want a lot of, no automobile crossings. That was something that popped up in an iteration back in 2012 or something. But we do want to make better access, but they didn't want it ruined. So trying to take that into account and looking at what we had and thinking about what made it pleasant to be there. And the framework plan that we developed encourages some centers for community gathering that you see roughly where the big lines are at Silver Springs and also again at Tor Bank, that those would be the crossing areas. You see that there is some trail that goes down to the trolley trail, just a little bit. But there's more crossings across McLaughlin because we're also very clear that McLaughlin Boulevard divides the community. And we do need good and safe access areas. So this plan has crossings. It developed walking paths and planned for where there should be greenery to create a pleasant, walkable environment. And also an area that, what I'm thinking about, if we put housing in here, we want it to be housing that is pleasant for the people that come to live there. So that's a key factor in how we were thinking about it going forward to. Where can the community gather? What will be pleasant for people who live in here? And how do we make it so that it feels not just safe? That was a big piece of it. But safe and really pleasant place to be walking in this area. And so that's, so that's that plan that you see. I'm not sure if there's anything else I wanted to add in. Karen, did I miss anything while I'm?
You covered it really well. I think the next piece, so then the next step, after the guiding principles and the framework plan were developed, really the hard work was about the development and design standards. You know, what kind of changes to the zoning development ordinance would be needed to be able to implement and allow and make this vision a reality, right? So I think as I touched on in the beginning of the slideshow, the overall community had identified the need and the desire to have these activity centers. But what kind of changes to our code needs to happen to actually make that, to make that a reality? And so coming out of this and working with the community and the consulting team, had a member that really helped us with sort of the code, what kind of changes could, should be thought about as we move forward? And so really, the potential changes to the code were put into some different categories. So it's changes related to the commercial areas, changes related to the MR1 lands, and then some changes that would relate to both C3 and MR1. And those had to do with the pedestrian connections and looking at parking requirements. So I'm gonna touch on each of these categories as we go through the rest of the presentation. So the first thing is, how do we get more housing? So in the C3 area, one of the things that was proposed is brought forward is to actually remove the density, the housing density limit within the C3 area. So provide more opportunity for property owners there to actually build housing. Currently, housing isn't allowed use, but that density is only at 25 units per acre. And it really isn't, it actually isn't enough to really trigger the ability for people to construct housing in that area. So I think that's one thing that came out of this is, hey, we should actually remove a density, the density limit in the C3 area. So this gives you an idea. So throughout this process, I think we were talking about the type of engagement. We had a couple of online surveys where we were asked, people, you know, what kind of housing do you want? What kind of housing do you think should be in the C3 area? So in the online survey, we actually had 65% of the people responded that they saw three to five stories, this mid-rise as an appropriate density. Others saw that perhaps maybe more of a low rise at 37%. And just sort of straight mid-rise without any mixed use kind of came in at 22%. So the next change actually had to do with how do you get more jobs in the area? I think I noted that the C3 zone right now actually allows for a lot of different uses. But it does have some restrictions related to small-scale manufacturing of raw materials. So I know that recently, there were some changes that you guys actually approved through the ZDO that were focused on kind of drinks and beverages and kind of brew pubs and whatnot. But this is looking at more, how do we support artisan manufacturing? How do we allow for more small-scale onsite manufacturing? So there's some proposed changes that would support that. So the next thing really has to do with setbacks and design standards. How do buildings connect with the area? So it was very important to scale buildings and integrate active design, things that would encourage people to use the sidewalk, make it a friendly place. So there's a set of recommendations related to actual setbacks and creating active design. One question that did come up several times through the process was whether or not ground floor retail should be required. And so as a part of this project, actually, this is not a part of the package. There are limitations and there are, at least the consultant said, you know what? You don't necessarily get to see the benefit if you have that requirement because sometimes they just can't construct the buildings and fill that retail space. But if you create, actually, if the buildings are designed with more active design and spaces that create the look and feel that you might have wanted to get with that ground floor retail, that's actually more, a more effective way to go about that. So as a part of the package, really looking at the active design instead of requiring actual ground floor retail. So this is the particular piece where we have gotten quite a bit of feedback. I think it's related to the letter that you received from MABA and the concerns that they have. So as a part of the process, we, the committee did receive a petition, a petition signed by many of the commercial property owners that expressed their concern about the fact that a part of the package of changes is this recommendation to prohibit new auto-oriented uses and self-storage. So this was something that the committee talked about. And they felt that even though there had been some concerns raised, the importance of limiting these auto-oriented uses was high enough that they continued to keep it as a part of their recommendation. So let me talk about that a little bit more and why. So let me talk about that a little bit more and why that's included within the set of recommendations that are moving forward. So a key goal that the committee had was to create a more walkable area, take advantage of the fact that this is kind of one of the highest served areas by transit. And what are the type of uses that perhaps would are needed to support that type of use for walkable? But what kind of uses actually contribute to making it less walkable? So as a part of the package is prohibiting new auto-oriented uses as well as self-storage. These have less opportunities for employment and then they detract from the experience of walking in the area. So this was talked about. So I think when we get to the end of the presentation, this particular presentation was also given to the board in December because we were asking them, okay, what direction do you want to take? And the board was concerned about this. They wanted to hear specifically from the commercial property owners. So we'll talk about one of the next steps that we'll be doing that has to do with doing some additional outreach to commercial property owners before the specific code language is brought back to you. So as a part of the, this is just some of our survey results that really kind of showed that there was a lot of support from the broader area, from that kind of half mile radius and even broader, we publicized the surveys kind of on our social media. We did push it out to our interested parties list, which was about 300 people. And we had really good participation in these surveys, but there was a lot of support for limiting the development of new car lots in the area. There was also support for limiting new self-storage facilities in the C3 zone along McLaughlin, but what we're really talking about is between Courtney and Park Avenue. So we are only talking that half mile area within the study area. So what does happen to the existing auto-oriented businesses if the code no longer allows them? So what they are is they do become non-conforming uses. They can continue to be used. You may be familiar with this concept. But really where this kicks in is that if that use that they have already is no longer used for a year, that's when a new use and it would be that particular project property would no longer be able to have those auto-oriented uses, but they would really, that particular use, if they had it already, would have to be discontinued for a year. A few other things. And so these are the changes that relate to the MR1 district. And what we were looking specifically in the MR1 district has to do with implementing cottage clusters. It's a different type of housing and allowing that type of housing at a higher density than is typically allowed, double the density of what the MR1 has. And so again, as a part of the survey, we had a lot of support for the cottage cluster. This is highly related to workforce housing. How do we encourage more housing that can be more affordable to a wider number of people? So cottage cluster units are smaller units that are built closely together and they have some shared space. So a couple of the other things that we touched on, there are some ped bike connections will be really important to support this whole area. So as Valerie pointed out on the map, how do we really support the construction of these ped bike connections? And then finally, there are recommendations related to parking standards to address multi-housing near transit. If there's multi-housing that are age restricted, how can we actually allow for more units to happen by not requiring as much parking? So those are some of the things that have come out as a part of the recommendation from the CAC. So I'm going to touch really briefly, look at this slide. Don't you love it when you have tons of words? No, I know. I think this is just to give you a taste of the fact that what we just went through were development design standards. Those would be changes to the code. This, this set of things are other things not related to development design standards that also would be good actions to be able to support that framework plan. So they're kind of outside of the ZDO framework, but it's just this acknowledgement that there's a whole lot of different things that really could be done to support the framework plan. The consultant team really called out a couple of key ones of that list. Also in your materials, we had provided a link to the implementation document. I know all of this is really quite a bit of information and it's part of the reason why we wanted to have this time with you tonight to be able to kind of share what's been going on over the past year. But a couple of key implementation items is what type of financing options should be out there to incentivize the different types of housing? So we need to think about how these things are financed. A residential anti-displacement plan should be put in place that incorporates some best practices, things like land trust, preserving the mobile home parks. And then finally, really refining the connectivity and streetscape plan to be able to give better direction to those connections identified in the framework plan. So all of that, bunches of hard work, the work that was done for the guiding principles, the framework plan, these ideas moving forward related to the development and design standards. All of this was brought forward to the Board of County Commissioners because we wanted to know if they A, accepted the work of the committee. And then two, we're interested in moving this package forward to be able to have staff start to work on specifics related to the development design standards and how they change into the code. So we talked with them in December, early December, and they did very much acknowledge the work that was done by the Park Avenue Community Advisory Committee and all the different elements. The committee really worked hard for over a year pulling all of this stuff together. The second piece is that the board did direct staff to move this project forward. It's part of the reason why we're here tonight. We wanted to give you guys kind of the overview and tell you how we will get to the specifics related to the zoning development code language. Tonight, we're not going to talk about specifics on code language, but we wanted, it was, the purpose was really to familiarize you with all the stuff that has happened. A couple of key things that also the board was very much interested in, and I think we touched on, is this need to connect better with those commercial property owners who have these concerns about these standards that we're talking about related to prohibiting new auto-oriented uses as well as self-storage. So to be able to talk with those property and business owners and get some feedback on how we can kind of work together and see if we can understand what type of issues there are there. So we are going to fold that into some of the next steps. I think the other piece that was very important from the board had to do with anti-displacement. What are the type of actions could be, can be put in place to address the fact that there will be some businesses and resident residential property owners that will kind of experience the pressures of displacement as more investment is made in those areas? So that's something that staff is working on and is talking with the board about over the next couple of months. So with that, here are the next steps. This is my last slide. The plan is, is to meet with commercial property owners and business owners to discuss their concerns. I know that Thelma, who is the coordinator for MABA, we're going to connect, we're hoping to connect with her as well as Sandra MacLeod, who is a Park Avenue Advisory Committee member and work with them to hopefully identify how we can best connect with those property owners. Because throughout the process, even though they were included in different mailings and different opportunities, they weren't able to participate in the same way that others did. So that's the first step that we'll be doing at the end of January, early February. After we are able to connect, we'll go back to the Board of County Commissioners to let them know what we heard and have them help us give direction a little bit more into those development design standards. Our goal is to do our DLCD notice, right? And kind of formal notice to DLCD in mid-March that we're moving forward with some proposed proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. We hope to come back to you in early April with a planning session followed with your, at your next meeting with a public hearing specifically on the ZDO changes and the proposed ZDO changes. So we would have a public hearing at the end of April with the Planning Commission. Have you develop your recommendation that would then go to the Board of County Commissioners in late May? So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and we are here to answer questions.
Karen, can I make a comment?
Sure, go ahead Valerie.
Okay, I wanted to put this in, a couple of things. I just wanted to identify that, first of all, that I I'm actually a member of the Oak Grove Community Planning Organization. And I'm also a member of MAPIT. So I'm pretty well connected into those organizations as well as being a resident who's lived in this Park Avenue area for 38 years. And so a couple of comments I want to make in being very respectful of the work of MAPIT, which I'm also on, and also of MABA, which has great business people that are working very hard. This little corner, this little edge of McLaughlin at the north end here is exceedingly neglected. So if you were to look at membership of MABA in our area, it's just about nil. And if you were looking at MAPIT members, I'm in for this area. So it is, well, I think there's some concern when we were reading the letter about the concerns that people had about our limiting some uses. This really fits into the MAPIT, the MAP plan. This is a no. This is an area where some things will take place. But there's all the rest of the area down McLaughlin to the next nodes that will be planned where other activity can take place. So we're just trying to create an area that's people-friendly, housing-friendly in part, but not the whole area. And that while we are limiting some things, we're also expanding uses of others, so increasing housing. And we're trying to take into consideration the idea that, and this goes back to my own work life, where I worked with low income and actually houseless people. When we're talking about creating more housing, we want to create it in an area where people want to live, where it feels good. So by limiting certain things, you know, like nobody wants to live right next door to a big storage unit or another car lot. But we're trying to create an area. So when people come in and they see what's already there and they're grandfathered in. But if there is a plot that they don't have to worry about what's going to go in next door, that this is going to be an area that's really designed for what we want, which is pedestrian and people-friendly. And just before, and one last thing is, I know there has been concern about how this Park Avenue project will be modeled down McLaughlin and the other areas. But what was significant about what we were doing is community engagement here. It's not that everybody has to use the guiding principles that we develop or a similar kind of framework plan, because that's going to depend on that other, those other areas. It's the community engagement that we would like to see replicated going down, except hopefully they will be able to do community engagement in person, because I tell you, trying to do it through Zoom and yard signs and whatnot has not been the best option. So anyway, thank you for hearing me tonight and letting us come and be with you.
Great. I'm going to actually launch on this one. I just, I read every word of this packet. I just found it amazing. It's so obvious. There was a tremendous amount of care, consideration, creativity, dedication that went into it. You know, I really can't say anything better than this piece of work, which is really well done. I commend you Valerie Anne and Karen and Lorraine and the huge committees that were involved in this. I don't actually have a lot of questions, just want to commend your work and I'm excited to see this come into fruition. How about others?
I have a question. What, in this particular area, what percentage of the commercial businesses in there are actually car-oriented businesses?
So I'll jump in with that. While I can't give you a specific percentage, I did look down and there are about 30, so there are about 30 different individual property owners. And I would say there's about half of those. So it could be up to 50% of the businesses that have some type of auto-oriented use, be it car sales lot or self-storage. There is also a boat sales place. But those are commercial properties. There are a whole set of like, there's Courtney Plaza that has a set of businesses all on one piece of property. But it could be close to 50% of the properties have some type of auto-oriented use on them.
Yeah, and as you go down McLaughlin, further down McLaughlin towards Oregon City, there is multitude of car-oriented businesses down that McLaughlin, that street. One of the things with McLaughlin is it's so wide, it's a dangerous street. A lot of people are injured, not only in the car accidents, but pedestrians. I just don't see how you're going to be able to make that a safe environment for putting up a multifamily unit on McLaughlin. I just, to me, that's just, it just seems like, you know, you're creating a situation. Unless, unless you do something with McLaughlin to make it safer, I don't know how you're going to do that.
And I definitely think that was something that was talked about. Creating more safe crossings within, of McLaughlin was included in the pedestrian and bicycle plan. So what are ways that we can slow down traffic in that particular area as well as create places for people to cross? Really was the primary way of impacting McLaughlin itself. But then what are those pedestrian accesses that people can have to the neighborhoods outside of the commercial area?
I'm familiar with the Milwaukee area, the downtown Milwaukee area. And a lot of businesses have closed down there, not only because of the current economic situation, but prior to that, the lack of parking in the business area down there, you know, restricted people from coming down and shopping down there. Now, if you're going to limit parking along this stretch of the highway, businesses, I don't know what kind of businesses you're talking about here, but if it's businesses that require some foot traffic and some automobile people driving down there to exercise, you know, the purchasing of goods and services, you're going to have a problem. I mean, Milwaukee is already seeing that with the current parking problems right in downtown Milwaukee. Just my comments.
So increasing the allowed residential density will actually help address that issue by getting the people in the neighborhood that would support those local businesses. So allowing those larger multifamily units and mixed-use units around the MAC station area and down McLaughlin will really help support those local businesses by just getting the people in the area.
And so where are they going to park? Are you going to expect them to only use mass transit or? It hasn't worked.
So when we come back to you at the Planning Commission, we'll have specifics about what type of requirements and recommendations we have relating to reducing parking. But we aren't at any point saying that we wouldn't require any parking. So it's more about reducing what's being required, but not totally eliminating that.
And Karen, you're talking about reducing the minimum parking requirement. Are you talking about reducing the maximum allowed parking too, or just the minimum requirements?
At this point, we were talking about just the minimum.
So Michael, if the market supported it, the developers could still choose to provide that additional parking.
Good.
Murph, I see your hand is up.
Yes, I'm being polite and quiet. I definitely agree with Michael in comment on limiting the amount of traffic, which it sounds like is gonna have to happen. Is there a business loop that's being planned? Or is that looked at, that you're gonna take, there's a major flow of traffic through that area? I, I don't see how you can just step away from 99 West and decide to change it without changing the flow of traffic in some way, shape, or form. Also, is there gonna be a change, or are you focusing on an uncertain income level for the rental properties? Perhaps people that can't afford cars, is that, are you looking at a lower income level to minimize the, the amount of auto vehicles in the area?
Yeah, so what was being looked at had to do with potentially different incentives being provided, such as if they are affordable units, then you could have the incentive of having less of a parking, less parking required. So there, that's one of the things that is being talked about, and that would be overall as a part of the package.
Yeah, as far as a business loop, is there a way to reroute traffic, so you don't have so much traffic that you have now going through that particular area?
It, it really is quite interesting. In a lot of ways, the area is constrained, right? Because what you have, you do have Oakfield on one side, but there's not too much space between Oakfield and McLaughlin, and then you have McLaughlin, and then there's the Trolley Trail. So there's not many opportunities for a completely separate kind of roadway network. New businesses would need to provide, you know, the appropriate levels of access into their property. But as a part of this plan, there is not a completely separate street that's being planned.
Karen?
Yeah, infrastructure change, it sounds like. Power lines are gonna have to go underground, I would imagine, you're gonna have stormwater control to upgrade. I, you know, I love the vision, it's awesome. I just like to see how it's gonna work.
Valerie, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I just, just really quickly, I know that while we talked about parking around housing units, and making sure that, that, you know, knowing that that needed a pencil out for the developer, we didn't talk about just simply eliminating parking. We're aware that parking is needed for businesses. When we talked about limiting, we're limiting auto-oriented uses. So the car repair shop, the paint shop, the car sales, the used car sales, the more used car sales, that, those are the kind of things that we talked about restricting. So I just want to be really clear that just, we're all very conscious that people need to be, you know, well, while I want to encourage everybody to walk and take transit when they can, we, we sometimes, we need our cars. So that was not part of the discussion.
Yeah, just the vision you gave us doesn't show any vehicle parking. And so I would be, it would be very curious to see how you could handle that load that would exist, once you take away these businesses and put in the businesses you're talking, there's gonna be a high occupancy and demand for a park, I would imagine.
We did talk about this is a 30,000-foot look. So the details of parking, I don't, I don't believe that we got to that much detail, Karen, that would be, and then I will be quiet.
Okay.
Is there, is there any consideration given to, I've heard rumors that, and of course it's rumor, but rumors that they're, they're gonna want to extend the MAX line all the way down into Oregon City? And it looks like it would go through pieces and parts of this plan that you have here. Any consideration given to what's gonna happen there?
So currently, there is not a plan to extend the MAX line. What has been talked about more recently is implementing what's called bus rapid transit, so really having more frequent buses, right? And then improving bus stops along McLaughlin to be able to accommodate more people. But it would not be a fixed rail. That was what was talked about when they were talking about kind of the funding package, it didn't pass. So it, that, even that is pretty far out. There's, you know, no funding for even improving to bus rapid transit in, in the near future.
Mary, you have your hand up?
Thank you, I took Murph's hint that I should have raised my hand. So before we completely move on from the auto-oriented car lot uses, having the MAX station there really does just change the nature of the beast for what is the, you know, the best use for the land in that area. So I think limiting some of these auto-oriented uses and self-storage uses is a great idea, but since there are some concerns. Karen, you showed two of the questions from the surveys, and one of them was specifically about car lots. Were there any other questions in the survey that were auto-oriented uses in general, or was it just the car lots?
Hmm, I know that we focused on the car lots, and as well as we did talk about drive-throughs, kind of like drive-through restaurants. Those were the two primary that I can remember, but I think that's something, you know, when we come back to you, we can give you more details about the survey, and if it included more than that.
And then on parking, as you get further into looking at the details, you might want to consider shared parking, especially if you're gonna be promoting mixed-use projects, that's a good way to limit parking spaces, but not necessarily impact parking need.
Right, and that was something that was talked about as a part of potentially being an incentive to reduction in parking requirements.
And then I think my last note was just about safe crossings and safe pedestrian crossings. I think having more crossings will slow traffic and increase awareness of the pedestrians on the street. There are pedestrians on that street now, but it is not a safe street to be on. So if, I think you covered it in the framework plan, but things like Refuge Islands and flashing, rapid flashing beacons and stuff like that can really make a huge difference. So I'd be interested in hearing more about that at our next meeting, too.
Great, thank you. Carrie, you had your hand up?
So this might be the less than 30,000-foot level of question, so if we can, you know, if we can come back later, that's fine, but I was curious to know what, it looked like there were some streets that were identified as green streets and landscape buffer, I can't remember exactly what the label was, but I was wondering why is labor labeled as green street or landscape buffer? I was wondering what defines, how the green streets are defined, for one question. And then secondly, my question is, why aren't all of the streets green streets? And why are there specific designation for that? And then thirdly, how will the maintenance of these streets be conducted after capital projects are done? Because I know for driving through some of the streets around my neighborhood, it looks beautiful once it gets constructed, and then it looks pretty terrible about six months after, and therefore, because it doesn't get maintained. So I'd like to, you know, understand those three different life cycle of green streets, I guess.
Well, I think you bring up a really good point about the maintenance, and that's something that we can kind of, kind of talk about and try to understand how we can communicate better about that. Really, the, the activity centers, so as a part of the framework plan, there was this concept of activity hubs. And how is it that we can create places and really more on the side streets, knowing that it is difficult to get people, it's difficult to make the McLaughlin corridor the walkable environment, but perhaps the streets that come off of McLaughlin really would be the places that could be more activated, right? And so on those, and I believe on the framework plan, that's where it's kind of showing, hey, we would have different sort of landscape and setback requirements that would help make those places more active. So the, the recommendations coming out of the consulting team really related to how we create the building design associated with those streets, and make them places that people want to bike or walk to. So that's, that's part of that, with regards to why there are certain streets that are more, where there's a greater focus, and maybe showing more trees and different things like that. None of these would necessarily take away from the standards we already have related to requirements for street trees or anything like that. Those are already requirements that we have in our, in our ZDO. It's just, it has more to do with the setback and the landscaping requirements. So hopefully that answered your question.
So Jennifer, or some, somebody from staff, if, could I get a copy of the current green street definition on the ZDO, so just so that I could get more educated about what we're referring to when we talk about them? That'd be appreciated.
I don't know that we actually have a definition of green streets, but there is a section of our, of our roadways provisions in the code that does talk about sort of what, what kind of circumstances would warrant green streets, and I can certainly send that to you.
Yeah, I guess I was, and maybe I'll, maybe I should have started with my understanding of green street is really not just the trees, but really using the street scape to meet the stormwater treatment requirements in addition to just the streetscaping itself. So that's where I was referring to, and in my opinion, all of the streets, like, I guess this kind of leads over to another question that I didn't ask, and I apologize for that, and that is, how are the stormwater management being accomplished here? Is that part of the, the concept plan, or is that going to be something that's gonna be done afterwards?
Say, there's no, there's no proposal to do something different for stormwater management here than we do anywhere else, there's no sort of special plan. So the way the county does it is we, in almost every case, and particularly in the urban area, the county's not the implementing agency for stormwater management, it's the, whatever district the property happens to be in. And so essentially, the developer has to meet the requirements of that, whoever the surface water management authority is for the area, and I would, there are some interesting boundaries in that general vicinity, but I assume this is all Oak Lodge Water Services, Karen, I think the whole plan area there would be.
So is there an opportunity to collaborate with Oak Lodge Water District to see how to make the, collaborate on, on objectives trying to be met? Lorraine is saying yes. You're muted.
Thank you, I've been trying to find that little hand and unmute here for a while. Yes, we do the design review, so design review gets all those parties on the table, agencies associated with that particular, the particular area in question. And Oak Lodge Sanitary and Water District are part of that area, they've been part of our technical advisory team members as well, so they've been engaged in the process all the, all the way through. Likewise, with Trimet and ODOT, that's what I was wanting to mention earlier, is the issue with the street crossings and the improvements and the traffic impacts, they've been engaged in the same conversation, they're willing partners, which is very great for us, because they want to be part of this discussion as we move forward. Their parking structure, we've had like, some conversations with that, so they're very engaged in it, so that's very promising.
Okay, thank you.
I believe next is Stevens, Steven had his hand up.
Thank you. My dad bought his house over in 32nd and Evergreen back in like 74, so I definitely know the area, and the 30,000-foot elevation, this looks like great, fabulous. I would hope that we could get ahold of ODOT and Trimet, maybe through Metro, the GIS layers for their, their land acquisitions, because they plan 50 years out, and not saying always 50 years out, they're looking at 20 years out and acquiring land for that expansion of the MAX that will happen. The question, of course, is light rail to heavy rail, and also a bunch of other things. It's great to see also some investment from North Clackamas, Grove had some improvements, and, you know, a little bit farther south than Courtney, new urban, substantial investment to bring schools that are current and fresh and beautiful. So this entire thing kind of comes together in my mind of improving an area, and then having it build upon itself to improve itself, to, by itself. So I look for, I look forward to more information.
Thank you, Steven. Tom, you're next.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a great step forward, it's, it's long overdue, if you, for those of you that may not have been around, this should have been done before they built the MAX station. Unfortunately, for, for ivory reasons, it kept getting put off, and so it's, it's long overdue, and it, and frankly, I'm guessing that because this hasn't been developed yet, it's inhibited, if that's the right word, the development in that area. I mean, you haven't really seen much the last however many years it's been since this station opened. I'm guessing primarily because the zoning and the plan doesn't really, doesn't really work very well for what it should be. So this is long overdue, and I'm glad to see we finally got this, we're making progress on this, and hopefully should lead to some significant improvements in that area when you're, when you're, when you're done. So applaud the effort. Obviously, with anything, there's always lots of little details to, to work through, but, you know, it'll never end up looking exactly like how you think it's gonna look anyway, because it's gonna depend on developers and all these other factors. So anyway, I think it's great. Good job.
Great, anyone else have any comments or questions? Karen, anything else you need from us on?
So I, I think that, first I wanted to see if Anne or Valerie had any closing comments, but really I wanted to emphasize what our next steps are. Hope, when we did speak with the board, like I said, really meeting with those commercial and business property owners is the next step. Commissioner Sabas and Commissioner Schrader wanted to participate in those meetings, so we're working to begin to kind of arrange and put together a plan for that. And with that, we'll be really targeting to come back to you with proposed ZDO changes in early April in a planning session, and then really having those, the hearings, the public hearing at the end of April. So that's just gonna give you that big picture, but we wanted to be here today with you to kind of share the, the story. So Anne and Valerie.
Actually, Steven, I'd like to add just one additional thing, just so people do hear this. When these improvements do happen, there are unintended consequences. Then the light rail came to downtown Milwaukee, a lot of families found that they could no longer afford to stay there, and they had to move farther out. So there are unintended consequences with improvements. Of course, these are gonna take time, but do understand that the decisions we make or recommend do displace people who can no longer afford, because it's such an attractive thing to commute to downtown Portland on light rail.
Thanks, Steven. Go ahead, Anne. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's, I appreciate that. To Stevens, we had, and we had a lot of conversation on that. And that's why we have the parallel working with the anti-displacement things. But that's not what I wanted to, I just wanted to put a little overall, a big picture thing in terms of the busyness of McLaughlin. We're very aware that this sets at the, the northern end there of the whole busyness of McLaughlin. And the, the traffic has come slowly through Milwaukee. And the possibility of, of keeping it, not taking the, the speed limit up there. So it continues into, to be a slower, more safe and community oriented. It's the whole atmosphere, we are presuming, looks a lot different than what it looks like, say, from Oak Grove Boulevard. I mean, Oak Grove Boulevard further south where it gets busier and busier. So I just wanted to say that we are in fact looking at it as, as changing the entire environment there. Not, not putting something else and not changing the, the busy, dangerous street there. So one other thing I wanted to just say in terms of the auto oriented thing, so many of the auto oriented places at this north end were not originally built for the auto, what they are used for now. So you'll have auto lots that, that are, used to be parking lots around a restaurant or something, or auto lots that are formed around what was formerly a residential place. So it, it, that's part of the blight, that's part of the underdevelopment. And if someone's going to put a nice fancy auto lot in, they're not going to put it there. All of that stuff just gets bigger and fancier as it goes, goes south. So I think it's really important to remember that this is a little tiny piece of the whole McLaughlin place and we're looking to really change it. And I, and I'll give a disclaimer. I live in the, the MR1 and my property backs into the commercial right between Evergreen and Silver Spring. So I live right there. I hear the cars being taken off the big, the, the auto transport trucks in the middle of the night. Clang, clang, bang, clang. That's I wake up with that. But I, so it's a different kind of atmosphere on the street than what, what we're looking at to have happen. So we're not, we're not naive about that. We're not naive about the changes that we're inviting. That's all. Thanks.
I would jump in and just, and first of all, I want to say that I really appreciate everyone's comments and your engagement in this project. It makes it feel like the work that we did in the last 18 months or whatever is validated. So I want to thank you for that. And also just the thought, this area is changing anyway. When I, when I moved here 38 years ago, when I bought my house, you know, Rosevilla and Lamont View were little small communities. They're not anymore. And you know, there's a lot of land that's changing. It's going to change anyway. And so one of the things that we talked to our neighborhood, we can either help guide the change or we can set, sit back and let it happen to us or nothing happened to us. And the choice is to kind of become engaged. So I thank you for hearing what the community is asking for. And I mean, I have to say, I'm absolutely thrilled that we got moved from the BCC to the planning division. I mean, this is, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Karen, really quick, will we be seeing the displacement studies at our next meeting?
So the plan with the anti-displacement is that the Board of County Commissioners will have, we have two different, we recommended to them that they have two different planning sessions. One, just for them to have a, a kind of a broad overview of anti-displacement. And then the second one is for them to get more into the details of what may be appropriate or different items that they want to follow through with. So as a part of the work that was done within the Park Avenue is that there was, was a memo that was created about residential best practices for residential, to address residential displacement. And so the board will be looking at that. A lot of the, the anti-displacement strategies do not, do not require changes to our zoning development ordinance, right? So that's part of the reason why they're on parallel tracks, right? We were focusing what we're taking to the Planning Commission on those changes to the ZDO. Whereas some of these, these other things that have to do with investing in affordable housing in this area about, or what other type of supports they might need, don't require ZDO changes. So we can keep you up to date. And at the next, what I guess what I'm hearing is, is when we have our planning session with you in early April, we can provide you with an update.
That would be great.
Michael?
Yeah. My comments about parking originated from a session that I sat in with the County Commissioners when they were putting in the orange line and the park station was being discussed. One of the engineers came in and said that the parking garage they were setting up there was insufficient. And that was just forgotten about. Now, if you go over there, you'll see cars parking in the Elks parking lot because that facility there for the parking was not adequately planned out. Or at least it was not implemented appropriately. So my concern is that parking needs to be a major concern here if you're going to change up what's there. So that was my reason for emphasizing parking.
And, and I appreciate that, that you brought that up. And we'll bring back again at that planning session because that parking structure was designed for two more stories. And there has been discussions with Trimet about moving forward with the construction of those two stories. So we need to loop back with Trimet to see that. And I believe that the funding for that was disconnected from that get moving transportation funding measure. So the funding may be available to construct those two stories of parking, but we'll bring that back in April and let you know.
Anyone else? Alrighty, I think we're there. Karen, Lorraine and Ann and Valerie, thank you very, very much. Again, well done and we're excited to talk through the details in April.
Thank you. Good night.
Yes, definitely. Have a good evening. Before we launch into our next session, I think I'd like to take a five minute break enough for everybody not had, okay, looks like it is. So five minutes. So we'll see you back here at 7:53. Great. Alrighty, I think we're back ready at 7:55. So we'll call our meeting back to order. And, okay, last time I called Lorraine and it was Karen. Is it Lorraine this time and not Karen? And what we'll be discussing is Long Range Planning Work Program for 2021 to 2023.
Yeah. So while I'll kick it off, fortunately for all of you, Lorraine definitely is going to be addressing a lot of the slides here. So you don't have to listen to all me. And I would imagine Jennifer will chime in on answering questions or clarifications and different. So it's kind of all three of us that'll be sharing the information tonight. So I too, we have the information that was in your packet. Oops, what did I do? But I will also, we have put together a quick little, a much shorter presentation. So we'll go through that first and then be able to have more of a deeper discussion. So let's see. Here. And where was I? Alright, so right now we are talking about the Long Range Planning Work Program for 2021 to 2023. Tonight, we're going to talk specifically about the input that we received from the public outreach efforts on the Long Range Planning Work Program. We'll outline the process that was used. One of the key purposes of tonight is to hear from you, to be able to have the Planning Commission have a discussion about both the input that was collected. But most, more importantly, if there are any ideas that we're missing, things that you yourself have thought about or as a planning commission, are there Long Range Planning Work Program items that should be considered as we develop the work program? And then we'll talk about the next steps. So with that, here's a real high level overview of what our next couple of months look like and how the work program is developed. We put out a notice in October of 2020 and that notice was sent to the CPOs, different county departments, cities, agencies, other interested departments, basically saying, hey, we are collecting ideas. What kind of ideas might you have about potential ZDO changes or long range planning comprehensive changes to the comprehensive plan, other planning projects? We did do a presentation to, at the Community Leaders Meeting in November, I believe it was. And we asked people to submit their ideas by December 18th. Today, here, we're talking to you and getting your ideas. And then we'll have a planning session with the board afterwards. We're trying to schedule one there in February. And then we'll come back to you in March. And in the March session, we'll provide a draft work program. It will be a public meeting, so we'll be able to hear from citizens. Some of you have been on the, the Planning Commission for a while. This is kind of a familiar process. And the Planning Commission will develop a recommendation and will bring that recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners in April. And then working towards the goal of having the board acknowledge the work program. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Lorraine and she's going to tell, talk to you a little bit about the input that was received.
Yes, so out of the multitude of emails and comments that I received over the phone, had the written comments, we received from 16 submittals, four from individuals, four from community planning organizations, three from other organizations. And that covers a lot of things. One from the city of Lake Oswego, one from an agency that would be Trimet, two from the county departments from sustainability and engineering. And 42 proposed projects were collected altogether. 30 of those are potential projects that we could include in our Long Range Work Program, but 12 of them are not suited for it. We typically get some that are more suited for capital improvement projects. So those were delegated to that category. Next slide. Oh, there we go. So in your handout, you received Attachment A. Attachment A, I'm just going to tell you the format that we have. Therefore, your guide you through it, not tell you. So we based it on the comprehensive plan. So we put it in the categories accordingly. So of those categories, we had citizen involvement. We had natural resources, energies and land use. So specific to citizen involvement, we heard requests that we extend the appeal period time. The complication for some of the CPOs that suggested that, that comment was based on their inability to reach out to their citizens. Sometimes they meet only once a month. Sometimes they meet every other month. As a policy, a planning policy, we typically acknowledge, yes, you didn't get it on the deadline date, but we receive and we accept and we include those comments from the CPOs into our planning decisions. So policy wise, we are lenient with that date, that deadline date. So the other one was natural resource, our next major bullet. And that talked about completing our issues papers. And these are talking about the projects that were in our 2019, 2021 project, Long Range Planning Work Program. And we're carrying those over and those are, these are mostly staff recommendations. And to complete the issue papers for the comprehensive plan of Chapter Three, our natural resources and energy update, to amend the floodplain regulations per biological opinion and require alternatives for tree preservation. That came from a numbers of CPOs as well. At least two of them, or excuse me, three organizations, including CPOs had mentioned that about tree preservation. And then the other one was identify and designate wildlife and recreation corridor linkages. And that came from our previous work program. The last major category was land use and evaluate zoning along the Eagle Creek Road from Curran North to Highway 211, which proposes an interesting project and that came from the Eagle Creek CPO. And probably I did want to highlight the format in which the, the Long Range Planning Program that you received, it's based, as I mentioned earlier, on the comprehensive plan. And we also address the goals associated with it. I think I'm not on our next attachment there, our next slide. But it addresses it in the categories of the goals of planning, comprehensive plan goals. It also identifies the project description as I outlined right here in these few projects. That's a broader scope of it. And then we talk about the descriptions of the projects, the source of the input as I outlined, staff comments that we have, and then exhibit numbers. So in that Attachment A, you'll see the exhibit number that is in the packet included with your, your work program packet. And then also on that last column that we have of that Attachment A is the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan, Zoning and Development Ordinance and Community Strategy Goals. That's all included where it ties to.
So building off of what Lorraine was just saying is, is that kind of the next bundle of projects within that Attachment A fell under the grouping of transportation. And there's a whole set of, of projects that are transportation projects. So there are the first two, that being the Damascus area transportation needs as well as the Art Road Goal exception are two projects that would continue on from the existing work program. The next few projects, the Clackamas Bike Walk Plan is one that staff has brought forward. It's a project that would be updating the pedestrian and bicycle plans. The Willamette River Crossing Feasibility Study is actually a project that emerged and came out of the Oak Grove to Lake Oswego Pedestrian and Bicycle Bridge Project. It, it really looks at potential crossings, pedestrian bicycle crossings, north and south of Lake Oswego. And then another project would be updating the Transportation System Plan. While that doesn't need to be done next year, starting the following year, since this is a two-year work program, beginning to think about what needs to be done. It's been 10 years since that plan has been updated. So we are looking to figure out how we start that process. So some of the community suggestions, there was a suggestion that we re-engage the Oak Grove to Lake Oswego Pedestrian and Bicycle Bridge Project. There were suggestions to amend the transportation, the Damascus Transportation Needs Project. There were suggestions related to looking at parking standards as well as the pedestrian plan in relationship to the needs around Trimet facilities. And then finally, we received a variety of suggestions related to ZDO amendments, mostly related to transportation from our development review team. So.
So in our next categories, we have housing. So some of these, for instance, the first sub-bullet there, that's dealing with the housing strategies. That's ongoing at this point and that was part of the 2019, 2021. So we're a continuation of that. Housing strategies, the update to include middle housing. That was a suggestion by a couple of agencies. And that's to include the House Bill 2001, I believe it was, that talked about the middle housing. Housing strategies to include housing production strategies. Again, that dealt with the same House Bill. Our next main category is economics. And this, the sub-bullet issues papers, that's a continuation from the 2019, 2021 work program. And that's talking about updating to the economic chapter of economics, the chapter. the chapter eight of economics for comprehensive plan. The next subcategory of Clackamas Regional Center, that's a new one. And looking at what is the town center now, the regional town center? What are the possible uses thereafter? We're having this whole transition as to what retail is and how it functions, and what are the other opportunities at that regional center location? Next sub-bullet is small-scale manufacturing. You saw the small-scale manufacturing at a narrower vision, and that was based on food and beverages, small-scale manufacturing. Some of the comments that we received are saying, expand that, expand it to be a little more inclusive of other various uses. Nothing was pinpointed as to what those uses are, but the scale, small scale, is what they're focused in on. Next major bullet is open space parks and recreation historic sites. And this one was brought before us by Lake Oswego, who has the city park on Lusher Farm. And that one is looking at a master plan for that particular location and city park. So exploring that. So let's see. What slide are we on now? Is this one me, Karen?
Yeah, well, and you could address these, these are the last few.
Okay. So additional input was on the community plans and design plans, looking at that McLaughlin Area Plan Projects, kind of that continuing conversation about the McLaughlin Corridor area. What other areas can simulate that, which is similar to Park Avenue with their own identity, own, own areas where transit-oriented development, as you see in the next bullet. And then also going further for the next, the third sub-bullet there, on historic overlay districts, identifying historic structures in the area and being able to provide overlays for them. So the next main bullet, others, it was just others. Anything else that didn't have quite that category that we could put in the comprehensive plan? It's just inclusive. So minor and time-sensitive amendments, completion of the ZDO audit, ZDO edits related to composting facilities, and public art standards. So looking at what those are and what they could be.
Yeah, and, and so with regards to the public art standards, that actually may fall into not a long-range planning work program project. There was, there isn't necessarily things that we need to do to change our ZDO or to be able to focus on that. In the overall work program and in Attachment A, it looked like we may have sort of flipped the one that's right after it, which is Input 31, which is the first one in not suited for long-range planning, which, which does have to do with, this was submitted by, I believe, Jenny Flatch, CPO, and they're interested in requiring the submittal of complete stormwater plans as a part of the application. And so whether or not, that might be something we need to consider, but overall, it really is the Stormwater Agency that, that really drives what's required as they do their review process. So that is something we may want to think about. So this here is the last year's Long Range Planning Work Program. This is what it looks like. We've got this multi-year program. What the red is on this is what are those projects that are actually continuing from the, the past year? So the first sort of eight columns there are the 19 to 21, and you can kind of see all of the different projects that were on the last work program. But those that are continuing, that haven't finished yet, do include, and we, and they are included in your overall list in that Attachment A, that I just wanted to re-highlight those to you. The land use housing strategies project that has begun, but we anticipate that that will, that full, all three different phases, you guys had an update of that, I believe, in December. All three of those phases are going to take, oh, like the next year and a half. What is it? It's January, right? So it'll take a while until we're totally finished with that. The other piece that, two other key transportation projects that I addressed, they're continuing on the Damascus area project. We were not able to get that started, as we had hoped, because there was a little, you know, a legal situation in whether or not the city had, was actually disincorporated or not. So we had put things on hold until that was clarified. And it is not a city, so we can go ahead and do the review of the Damascus needs, the area that was formerly Damascus. And then the Art Road Project also had been delayed because there had been a lot of changeovers, a changeover in staff and situations in Canvey, and they're our partner on that project. And then the minor amendment and time-sensitive ZDO amendments, that's something that will carry every work program. We always, we have to recognize, and you guys worked pretty hard just a few months ago, to, to approve and go through all of those different kind of smaller and time-sensitive amendments. So we anticipate that we'll have those type of changes into the future, as well as still needing to complete the ZDO audit. And then the final thing that carries over from the last work program is this idea of issue papers. There were two issue papers that were identified as needs. And I'm not quite sure if, actually, some of you hadn't been a part of the planning commission. So an issue paper is this concept that we want to look at all of the different, all of the different issues, all of the different kind of recommendations related to one particular chapter, kind of comprehensively. And this was used as a tool for housing. There were many different strategies that we're looking at and that we needed to address. And through the issue paper, we were really able to format a way that we could develop an approach and identify things early on that were reasonable to address, and then perhaps have some recommendations of things that we would not include with regards to the update. So we knew that there are things related to, there are a variety of different things related to natural resources and energy, but also the economics chapter. So those are two that we want to put together, what we're calling these issue papers. So the next thing, and again, all of these are included within that Attachment A. We wanted to have sort of a comprehensive list of, of these ideas. But these were brought up by long-range planning staff. There has been something that's been lingering for a while, and we know that we need to amend our floodplain regulations per the biological opinion. As Lorraine mentioned, there is this idea of a project related to the Clackamas Regional Center. How can we support redevelopment in that area and, as well as future development? The Clackamas Bike Walk Plan, staff actually received funds to be able to undertake an update of the pedestrian and bicycle plans, the Willamette River Crossing Project, and as well as the Transportation System Plan update. So all of those were staff-recommended projects. So Lorraine, you are going to address what, what's considered when we develop the work program?
First and foremost is a consideration as to what is lingering from the 2019, 2021 work program. So we look at that. As Karen mentioned, we did have a delay in some of our projects. Some of them due to community outreach efforts, et cetera. But most of them are on track for the most part. But we take that into consideration. We also, what is it going to be our community outreach component? How do we need to restructure projects in the future? Are we still going to be doing the Zoom meetings? Are we going to have a hybrid of community outreach? How does it affect our projects? Incorporation of ways to update the comprehensive plan. So we're looking at different ways in which to engage in the comprehensive plan discussions, and how do we come to the resolutions as to what it takes to update the materials? We do have some plans such as North Clackamas Parks and Recreation. For years, I've been talking about how we're not consistent with their, their master plan for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and as well as economic development, as we mentioned earlier about addressing that section of our comprehensive plan, that chapter. Looking at the Planning Commission priorities, what are your priorities? And how do you want to see that embedded in our work program? Likewise, with the Board of County Commissioners priorities, what is it that they want us to focus in on as we move along in adopting this work program? The alignment of the five goals of the county strategic plan, that was outlined in Attachment A. And that's how we categorized the different projects and how the relevancy, does it align with those, the goals, does it align with the comp? What chapters of the comprehensive plan, what sections of the ZDO? That was all included in our thought process. And staff availability, last and foremost, do we have staff to do the work? So those are the primary ones.
So just before, we just have one or two more slides, and, and I just wanted to highlight that we do realize that the BCC priorities and strategic plan, housing continues to be a top priority. And within Performance Clackamas, there are action items related to increasing the number of housing units across the area median income and ranges. So this kind of gives you an idea of the goals that are really laid out in Performance Clackamas. And we really anticipate, you know, the highest priority being continuing that housing strategy project. So the next steps with all of this, I think we touched on it probably at the beginning. This is probably a, just a repeat, but as a reminder, we'll, we'll talk with you here and hear about your priorities. But then we'll also go to the Board of County Commissioners and hear about their priorities back in March to you with the staff recommendation that will also include a public meeting and a recommendation from you that then we take on to the board. So with that, we are opening it up for conversation with the Planning Commission, whether or not you have questions on the input that's received to date. But most importantly, discussion amongst the members about what Planning Commission ideas that you may have. So I'm going to go ahead and stop my share, so y'all can talk. I wasn't sure if Jennifer, we didn't like invite you in, and I don't know if you have any other things that you want to say.
I'll just, I'll just wait for the question. Mary?
So I have questions, just, I want to know more information on what the historical overlays districts items really are. Is it identifying individual structures for preservation? Is it identifying areas for a full historic district? Is it the heritage trees? Is it all of the above?
That one mostly came from, let's see, the historic, the Oak Grove area. Karen, you got the.
Yeah, so that was, yeah. It was submitted by the Oak Grove Community Council. Their Exhibit 12, what they specifically talk about for land divisions of properties in the historic corridor, historic district and historic landmark overlay district, resources such as accessory structures and heritage trees associated with the primary historic research resource on the site should be afforded the option of protection via shared, shared ownership权. So it's looking a little bit at both historic districts and its relationship with, I believe, the natural resources. So we're going to go on. Presently, to be protected, associated resources must be moved to the same lot of the primary resources. So they're looking at the historic overlay in relationship with these other resources.
Okay, just from my experience on the Historic Resources Review Board, I do know that there are some situations where associated structures, accessory structures that are of significance might not necessarily be tied to nominations and might not necessarily be afforded the same protections. I know there's been a lot of conversation about heritage trees and just tree preservation in general. And one of the points they brought up about when historic resources are demolished, needing to have interpretive markers or, or signs. I would support that. I know there have been several historic structures that are lost, and particularly one on right near the area we were just working on. I can't think of the name at the moment, but it would be very valuable to have that sort of thing.
I could speak on the heritage tree part, the whole program for the heritage tree. They were issued markers, et cetera, to, and recognition as a heritage tree that they could put on their property wherever they so designated it to be. It was, there, there was no requirement. There was no protection for those because it was on private property. And so the landowner does have the right to include it in a deed or such, so they can do it in that manner. But we didn't dive into the part of protecting it as a historic overlay. As for the, you're, Mary, you're part of the Historic Review Board?
I was before I was on the Planning Commission.
Okay. So your, your comment was to make sure that they do have some designation? Because we did have a program that did have historic landmarks on property.
I, I think it's worth looking into these recommendations a little more and fleshing out what they could actually mean versus, it's been a while since I've read that section of the code. But I do know that with my past experience as a historic preservation planner, and I'm the historic resources planner with Gresham now too, that our ZDO could use a little beefing up in that area. So it's worth looking into these concerns.
Okay.
Tom?
Yeah, I, just a kind of a clarification. I'm a bit confused, maybe I missed it, but are, are, you're looking for advice on what should be priorities versus what shouldn't? Because it's a pretty long list. And, and in the past, it seemed like part of the presentation included a recommendation of what, what we want, what we're going to move forward with. Where tonight, it seems kind of open. It just seems like all of the projects are out there without really any context of, well, what makes sense from staff's perspective moving forward? What do we have the capacity for, what do we not? And it, so I'm a little bit, I'm not quite sure what you need from us tonight, kind of given the way it was presented.
You want to say something, Jennifer?
I was going to say, yeah, we're do, this is sort of step one. So we will be bringing you a recommendation in March. So you'll get that, you know, a week in advance of the public meeting where you take comment. But we haven't gone through the list yet with that sieve to say, well, we think this is a good idea. We think this is a bad idea, here's why. But you will get that. I think at this point, we're, we're really trying not to dominate the process yet from the staff perspective. So we've got all these projects that have come in. Yes, we submitted some as well. And then we want to know if, if we're missing something. I mean, this is a very comprehensive list. But if you have priorities that are not reflected here, we want to hear that tonight. If you have preliminary thoughts on, you're, you're welcome to share them also about what's on the list. But we're, we're mainly trying to understand if you have questions at this point, and if you have priorities. And then we are going to be going to the board to have this same conversation. And so it really won't be, I think, until after that, that we would be formulating a staff recommendation about what we think. I can tell you, as we, you know, we're very clear in our public outreach, we don't have a lot of extra capacity. I mean, when have I ever come to you and said, oh, we have all this extra staff and nothing to do? But it's, you know, it is true because part, you know, and some of the projects that are carrying over are pretty significant, particularly the housing strategies project. It's going to take a lot of staff time over about 18 months. So off the top of my head, and not having, again, really delved into this, we may have some capacity in the second year of this two-year program when housing is done. And Park Avenue is, you know, Park and Avenue, we're hoping is going to wrap up by the end of this fiscal year to take something else on. And that, so I think there's some room there for something. And then this minor amendments project, you know, we were able to do three or four things that the community asked for two years ago as part of that minor amendments package. things that the community asked for two years ago as part of that minor amendments package. And so those are the ones where we don't need a lot of research, we don't have to go out and do a whole big public outreach, we don't have to hire consultants, we don't, we just need to do a little bit of vetting of an issue and then propose something. So I think there's some room for that. And frankly, that's about it unless we're going to pull something off. You know, unless you're going to say, we don't want to do housing, or the board's going to say, we don't want to do housing. Capacity is going to be relatively limited. So we do need to be thinking in terms of what are the big priorities.
Yeah. And I understand that, and frankly, I would agree that, you know, housing is a big priority and, you know, for obvious reasons. So I can't imagine we would advocate for that to be a priority. My, my bigger question is really, what does your staffing look like? Capacity? Has it changed significantly? Have you, I know a lot of, lot of, a lot of agencies, my former organizations in deep trouble financially and, and doing furloughs and layoffs and whatnot. And so I gotta think that there's going to be a little bit of that with the county as well. And so how big of a factor will be, will Stephanie be in what you really can take on?
A fairly, I think it's a fairly significant factor, although I'm hopeful that that's reflective of, I mean, we're, we're at a reduced level now. I'm certainly hopeful that that, that we're not going to be facing things like furloughs or layoffs, but the budget process of the county is just getting started. And it's really too early for me to know what sort of implications, you know, we might have for our program. We lost two FTE, they were vacant, you know, due to retirements, two FTEs at the beginning of this fiscal year, and we are carrying one vacancy now. So we are down historically, you know, in terms of where we have been for staffing. So yeah, I, you know, we, we've been talking about that, like internally about how we sort of present this work program. Is it, is it like we have this many FTE, you know, to devote to long-range planning? And maybe that makes it easier to wrap our heads around. And I think, you know, roughly speaking, we think we have maybe two FTE. But that is, that's just a rough estimate right now that we would be able to devote. And I think the reality of, we're going to look at what's really been happening, and I think the reality is, is that we've been below that over the last 18 months in terms of what we've really been able to devote to long-range planning because of how much current planning, you know, we're obligated to do.
Right, right. Okay, well, that's, that's helpful because I, that's, that's been an issue in the past when we go on to these exercises. And I, and I think I recall where you've made estimates of what your FTE capacity is and how this would fit in. I think that'll help also for those people who made requests that aren't going to get, their project's not going to be moved forward if this is a way to explain, you know, here's the realities. I, I thought it was useful in the past, so it's just
And I should clarify, because if I don't, Karen's going to clarify for me, which she should. And that is that when I'm speaking about that, about land use, so of course, you're looking at the program for land use and transportation.
I understand.
Is funded differently.
Understand.
There's some FTE there, so I was speaking just to the land use side.
No, no, I understood that.
Great.
Anyway, that, that's my only concern. It's a, it's a big list, as always.
Yes.
You know, there's, there's a lot of things that need to be done on the list. There's nothing, it seems trivial in my mind, they're all legitimate issues that people have concerns about. It's just, there's, you know, only so much you can do.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah. Tom had one of my questions about the staffing levels, and I think Jennifer covered that pretty well. I do would like some update on T4, which was the Roda Denrum issue. We had a number of, as I recall, we had a number of citizens come in and were looking at that project. And from what I read in, in the write-up, that's been looking for funding and, and I wasn't sure from reading about that, who's got the ball on that? Is it something that the county has? Or is it something that the citizens in Roda Denrum have with ODOT? Or what, where we stood on that? That was my first question. And then regarding the, carrying on with what Tom was saying, be, you know, these, these are a lot of projects and, and I, I would really appreciate something from the staff on which of these projects have the biggest payback. And, you know, payback is probably, you can use that in a number of ways, but I was more interested in payback in terms of public need and payback in terms of which of these projects boost or help economic development within the county. If, if something to be put with, you know, some notation put with each of these projects, an estimate of what, what type of payback we get from, you know, from a public need perspective as well as an economic development perspective. And that would, at least in my estimation, help me prioritize what your projects are. So I'm done.
So let, let me talk a little bit about the Roda Denrum project to begin with. So coming out of the last work program, there was the citizen advocacy for that project, really trying to understand how you can make the, the pedestrian environment work up there, help implement a plan that they put together. And so staff was able to work with the Roda Denrum's DPO to get funding from the state, the TGM program, to do a site plan on a specific property. There's a property up there that's owned by Ski Bowl that was really interested and willing to work with the community to see how, what kind of alternatives could help, what kind of alternatives would help further and be able to achieve the Roda Denrum vision. So that's been a project that's been underway. They have been working with a consultant to develop these different alternatives. It had a little slowdown because of COVID, right? With the public engagement piece. And so they're kind of in that last steps of that project and should be wrapping that up within this work program. So bottom line is, is, is that they were able to access funding to be able to get a consultant to help them out and be able to give direction as to how can they move these projects forward, especially related to kind of making it a more walkable environment up there. So that's the Roda Denrum project from the last work program. I think, and kind of also looking at both Lorraine and Jennifer, that one of the things we can, we can fold into the recommendation is, and I'll call it a high-level assessment. I mean, it's, it's, it'll be a guess, we won't, I, I'm not quite sure how we will completely be able to assess the economic need or benefit, but there will be some projects that there'll be a clearer relationship. And so we can talk about that as we kind of move into the next phase of perhaps the work program, program recommendation. Is that reasonable? I mean, Jennifer, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I've been thinking about this a little bit, not exactly the way Commissioner Wilson framed it, but, but similarly, and I think what gets, what gets hard is to kind of, I don't think it's always clear, right? So what we get asked to do typically in planning breaks down generally into one of two camps. People either want us to deregulate, or they want us to regulate. Quite frankly, I mean, that may be a bit of an oversimplification, but that's pretty much what, what it comes down to. And, and sometimes I think there's this tendency to think, well, okay, deregulating is good for the economy and, you know, regulating's not. And I don't think it's always that simple. You know, like it's trying to figure out, well, if we allow something new on property, maybe that does provide an economic opportunity, like we talked about higher density in Park Avenue or reducing the parking requirement for developers. That seems to have a pretty direct correlation to some level of economic development. The flip side is, well, if we prohibit the auto-oriented uses, have we curtailed economic development? And it may not be that simple because it may be about changing the character of an area, which in the end might actually result in greater economic development all the way around. And so that's why I think, I would concur with Karen, it's going to be a very high-level sort of, well, here's kind of what you might want to consider about what the impacts might be, but it's probably not a straight line between each project and, and that, you know, the economic development question. But I think it's a good thing to think about.
Well, I perfectly understand that, and I understand we're talking about some estimates and some vague issues here and there. But if we could get some kind of general idea on that, I mean, I, I'm looking at some of these and I'm saying, wow, that looks pretty good. I, I think that one's, you know, and I may be looking at it wrong, and you have more knowledge and more experience in the planning process and, and understanding what the ramifications are than me. And so, you know, if you had some type of, you know, an input into it, say, you know, looks like there's going to be good payback on this one, I would appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely. All right, how about Murph?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yes, on the Roda Denrum crossing, I, I'd just like to add on top of Commissioner Wilson's comments that, yeah, that area is really attracting an awful lot of mountain bikes during the summer. And there's a tremendous hazard of traffic trying to cross Highway 26 to that. You know, the faster movement that we could develop something in there within the next five years, along with ODOT, would be awesome because it is desperately needed. Definitely. But I wanted to bring up the floodplain issues per BiOP. The National Marine Fisheries, you know, had come up with a, with their opinion and, which has been long overdue. And we need to make some changes. I think our housing strategies should probably follow adjustments we make on our floodplain adjustment regulations. What about, what do you think, Jennifer?
I think we have to wait. I know it's hard to imagine we still need to wait, Murph, because it's been like years and I get that. This, it feels like kind of the glacial pace here, but FEMA and DLCD, anyway, there's this group, right? That's, and I'm sure you've been at some of these meetings, is working on what is the sort of Oregon solution to this issue? Because it's not just Clackamas County, right? It's everybody who's in the same region and, right, that has to deal with this. And so they're going, they were also slowed by COVID, but they've been having extensive outreach, lots of different focus groups about what this ends up looking like. And once they come out with their recommendation, then local governments are going to have a timeframe for implementation. And I knew what it was and now I've forgotten, but I feel like it might be 18 months from when they come out with their, and originally that was supposed to be like by the end of the year, and of course that, they were delayed. So I think we need to wait until we see what they tell us we have to do, because there's going to be potentially different options for how Clackamas County can demonstrate that we're compliant with the BiOP. And so at the, I'm not an expert on this, but just for the rest of the commission, because Murph is totally dialed into these issues and not everybody is. Essentially what happened is there was a lawsuit and the National Flood Insurance Program was the target of that lawsuit, essentially saying that that program is contributing to essentially violating the Endangered Species Act in terms of, of, you know, salmon, salmon species. And so they were successful in that lawsuit and hence where we are where we are now, wherein we're going to have to do something about our floodplain regulations that approaches them more from a habitat perspective than what they have been, which has really been hazard mitigation in terms of development in, in the floodplain. So it's a bit of a change. However, local governments in Oregon already do, you know, things in river and stream buffers that are intended to be habitat protective, so it's not as though we have nothing. And part of this effort right now that the, that federal and state government are going through is to kind of look at, hey, we already have some things we're doing, we should get credit for that. What's missing? What else needs to happen? And so ultimately, yes, we may have to amend our regulations and it won't be optional. So we're, we're putting, I think it's safe to say that that's going to show up on the list from staff's perspective anyway, that we're going to have to do it. We just don't know the timing yet in terms of when.
And I do, would just like to add that we're going to have to align with state. The state has to make changes also, major changes that are going to back local government.
Yes.
We can do these changes.
Yep.
But that's about all I have to say for now.
Tom?
Yeah, I'm back. I was, Michael raised a good point, it got me thinking about the whole, how do you go about determining what projects have merits versus higher merits than others? And obviously, economic is, is a good one, but I can think of a lot of other, other things as well that we, we need to kind of balance again. So the floodplain's a good one because there's, that's an environmental one. The social equity is another issue. And so I'm curious if, is, does the, does the board or the county have a series of guiding principles that try to address all these various factors? And that when you're prioritizing projects, you're also making sure that you've looked at it from all these various perspectives and where, you know, a project that may not seem like it's a very, very important, maybe has huge, huge social equity implications or huge environmental implications. I think it would be helpful to make sure that we're looking at things fairly holistically when we're going through this process, so we're not just, it's not just focused on one, but it's, it's a more holistic look. So just, just my two cents.
Yeah, I think it would be staff's goal, I mean, we're not going to write an essay about 42 projects or whatever, obviously. But absolutely, there needs to be, staff will do some analysis that factors in, you know, the time commitment, that factors in the, you know, the very, these principles that the county does have, these, there's five big ones and subsets thereof, you know, how they fit in with those, economic development being certainly one of the issues, environmental, as Murph mentioned. So we can, we can evaluate kind of generally how each of these dovetails with those basic principles. And, you know, then there is also a practical, right? There's a, is this politically realistic? Is this something, you know, that's just simply going to be unpalatable for, you know, the level of controversy that would be generated? And we have to put that lens on it too. It's just a practical reality.
Yeah.
So yeah, well, we will bring you all, all of the above.
Thanks.
Look, Tom, I think that, you know, having a planning commission with all the various backgrounds that we have here, we also provide some of that input that you were, that you were addressing in that, you know, we, we look at it from different perspectives, from the planning staff and, and individuals.
I would agree. But I'm thinking of the broader public as well, that the various, there's lots of other folks that, you know, may not be privy to come to our meetings or, and so it's, it's just helpful that when you're speaking out beyond this group, that, you know, these other perspectives feel like they're, they were considered, that's all.
Okay, Louise?
Okay, uh, okay.
I think you're on mute. There we go.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, I, I've had technical difficulties, both video and audio, the entire meeting, so I'm constantly in and out. My question's more of a dual level. I noticed going through the projects, pretty much 95% of them are in urban areas. It's just, thinking the one up the mountain that are in real rural areas. So is that just because it's always like this?
I guess I would say there's maybe multiple reasons for that. We have, you know, there are some groups, a couple of community planning organizations and, you know, some of the agencies they think that have commented to us that do have an urban focus. And so, you know, I think part of it is just the who is, who is commenting? And we certainly notified all of our CPOs in our rural area as well. It isn't as though they weren't given the opportunity, of course, but I think part of it is just the, just who, who submitted comments. And then the other thing is that it's just reality that the county has a lot less control. And then the other thing is that it's just reality that the county has a lot less control in rural areas in terms of what we can do to sort of change things, because a lot of what's going on in the rural area is dictated by state law. So I'm not saying we can't do anything. Of course, we have, we certainly have some flexibility, but not as much. So I think that that's part of it as well.
I think also this, this year we had less from the rural areas. We, we usually get a little bit more, not much, but this year we did have less input from the, the notified parties.
Louise, did you have something else you'd like to say?
No, I think that covers it. I just was curious because, you know, it just seemed like so few, you know, I went through the it's all urban, what the heck, you know, so that's just why I wanted to, you know, figure out what, what, what that was all about. And it sounds like it's a little less than usual.
Uh, Mary?
Yeah, um, so I know that our next meeting will actually have a little bit more information with the staff recommendation. And if it's similar to the last one, you'll be giving us guestimates as to the amount of staff time. Is, are you planning on doing that again? Okay, good. That will help prioritizing and picking and choosing at the next meeting. But I'd like to basically put in my nudge for ones to consider and get kind of worked out and in the recommendation, whether you end up deciding to recommend them or not, but having the information on them would be worth seeing for me. So that would be pretty much anything in the natural, preservation of natural resources area, including tree canopy protections. Definitely consider continuing all the housing stuff, but I think that since that's continuing, it'll probably be on there. And then, as I said in my comments before, just the consideration of the historic resources comments and seeing if there's anything feasible in those comments, because I know they've come out before. And even if it's as small as the one comment about can we require a plaque when a listed resource is demolished? But a good look at those concerns, I think, is worth taking. The Leshur Farm, I think is definitely worth looking at. I've been out there before when they were updating the building and when I was on the Historic Review Board. It's a great place. The small scale manufacturing, I know we've had the conversations about the food and beverage. And all along in those conversations, we were, I, and I think many of us were very interested in small scale manufacturing beyond just the food and beverage. So I'd be interested to see that continue on. And then the updates in the code to support composting, I'd like to see that. And I'm wondering if that's small and simple enough to get in the small and time sensitive ZDO updates. I think that's my list.
A couple of you have said some words that got my head thinking about, one was broader public, one was actually political. And I'm wondering at what level do we not consider, you know, the federal level of things? I think in the coming years, we're going to see some being addressed with global warming steps to address it. I'm sure it's going to come, you know, down the ladder, but I'm curious on whether anything's been discussed, planned, is, you know, I don't know if there's room two years from now with some staff, what, what we might see that look like? Also with diversity and, you know, addressing caste systems and things of that nature. I think those are two things we'll see strongly come down from the federal level. Of course, also healthcare, but I don't think that's in this purview. But those are two things I hope that we are really thinking about.
I was gonna just jump in and say that the county is undertaking a climate action plan currently. And we do anticipate that there might be something that comes out of that climate action plan, that that project really is underway, starting right now, take that 12 to 18 months. I think part of what we might be thinking about is in that issue paper related to natural resources and energy, maybe we address some things of what's coming out of that climate action plan. So that might fuse in with your, your ideas about the greenhouse gas.
Coverage fits in there too.
And sorry, what did you say?
Canopy coverage fits in there well too.
Right, exactly. So, and I do think the, I'm not quite sure if you used the word social equity, but issues around equity is something that it's possible we didn't do a good enough job in covering within those work program items. I think it'll be interesting coming out of the conversation with the board. I know there is some work at the county related to looking at codes from an equity, using an equity lens. So it may be that some of what we might see for our ZDO audit might end up having to grow because of that. So.
Very good. That's good. It's being thought of. All right, any other questions or input? That's a, quite an elephant to eat. I mean, that's certainly one bite to the side. Wow, I don't know how you get your arms around that one, but good job. That's a lot of information. Did you say something, Murph?
Yes, I would just like to add on to Mary's comment about tree canopy and how important that really is to watershed health. And we saw this summer how we let things get out of hand and what can happen. We really do have to focus on our watershed health to prevent what we, what happened last summer, because that's knocking on our door. And we need to slow water down, absorb it and keep it in the ground around here, instead of watching it go down the street. So I, I just want to make sure we get that in there.
Good. Anybody, oh, oh, Murph, okay, anyone else?
Murph, Murph, are you advocating that we put up dams? You know, when you said retain.
Absolutely not. I, I think opening up some of our levees that we have built and allow rivers to access their, their floodplains. Allow water, instead of just running down a drain into a culvert, to go into the ground through vegetated weirs that we have built into urban areas, very similar to what we just looked at that was presented to us. We've mentioned, how are you going to control stormwater on that project? And I would be very interested to see if they're going to capture it or just allow it to run off. If it goes into the ground, at least it has a chance to get back into the aquifer and that's most important.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Now, let's see, I believe sometime back we had a presentation from, I forget who it was, about doing some soil sampling along the Glaughlin. Does anybody remember that?
No.
Nope.
Was that a brownfield project? Was that the metro was leading? That's my understanding of a project that was along McLaughlin related to brownfields.
Yeah, there was some soil sampling they were going to do along, and I was concerned about some of the mobile home parks that were along there and that they could be finding some hazardous waste and that would cause them to shut down. Nothing's happened with that?
No, that, that is the metro project, the Brownfield project along the McLaughlin corridor. And it's, they invited people to have a assessment done. And that's, that's the extent of the project. It doesn't pay for any corrections of the property or anything, but just to do the assessment. The basis for that is just to check sites and in the event that they wish to sell the property, they would have to be doing that effort anyway. So it saves them some cost out of their pocket so that it's covered by the grant itself.
So was, was that actually implemented or did we have any development from that or is it just gone by the wayside?
No, no, it's still continuation. Not a lot has transpired in the past few months for that. They had an extension of the grant that was done and they had a number of funds available still because there wasn't enough parties that opted to take that invitation. And so they did apply for another grant because they had to use the money and/or else not be eligible for it. So they did another call out to the property owners. But like I said, I haven't heard much from the project in the past few months, so that past two months, three months.
Thank you for the update.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay, how about Karen, Lorraine, Jennifer, anything else you want to hear from us? Okay, all righty, I think we're going to move along then for any other business. I think there's minutes. Are there minutes? Oh, yes, well, that's. Let's do that. Then schedule, oh, good heavens, there isn't a minutes on here. Yes, there are minutes. I knew it wasn't listed, so I thought, well, let's do it under other business. That's okay. I wrote it and I didn't have any corrections. Did anyone else? Okay, do we want to just accept them by acclamation or do we need a vote?
I'm moved we accept the by acclamation.
Awesome.
Again?
Good job, Michael. Okay, good. All right, well done, Garcia. I still don't. Okay, schedule with you, Jennifer? So it, you know, it just seems like we go through these periods where there's nothing going on and then all of a sudden there's like three major projects all vying for time. And I think that's essentially where we're going to be from about late February through June, where there's going to be the, phase one of the Housing Strategies Project, the Park Avenue that we discussed tonight. And there's another code amendment package, so that this whole minor amendments thing, the idea was we were going to do that every year. And of course, we were a little late in getting, you finished it, it took effect in October and theoretically it would have been done before, you know, July 1, but as with everything, there were some delays. So we do have a few minor amendments that staffs identified that really kind of need to be addressed. And at this point, still trying to decide if we're going to maybe do kind of a combination ZDO audit package with a few of these time sensitive things that we've identified. So Glenn Hamburg is just getting started working on that. So we're going to have those three things plus the work program adoption all going on between late February and June. So you will be busy. At this point though, I do not, we've already canceled the meeting for two weeks from now, and I do not think we're going to have anything ready for February 8. So I'll let you know for sure, but most likely no meeting on February 8. On the 22nd of February, Karen will be back and with one of the transportation planners to give you an update on the transit development plan that the county has been working on. And to revisit the fee in lieu of discussion that you may all remember, it's gotten you guys fired up both times we've talked about it. So we're going to have a more in-depth discussion of that with the hope that maybe we will be able to do those little amendments to the code that they've been working on. You wanted a process. How are you deciding how to spend the money, et cetera? So we'll be back, we hope, to report on that on February 22. So I'll be a transportation, kind of a transportation oriented discussion that night. Then March 8 is what we've got penciled in for the public meeting on the work program. And the only reason I'm saying penciled in is because we need to get a policy session date set with the board and we've asked for that for February. If for some reason we can't get on their docket soon enough, we may have to push out past March 8, but that's the goal. I would like you to consider whether you would be able to meet on the 29th of March instead of the 22nd. You don't have to tell me tonight. I'll send a follow-up email. Karen and I are both not in town. Well, we may be in town. We're not working the week of the 22nd, which happens to be spring break. For those of you who still have kids who might be taking spring break. And so given the projects we've got on the list, probably wouldn't be meeting on the 22nd. So if there's the possibility to meet on the 29th, that's great. It would probably be a discussion of housing strategies, the phase one of the Housing Strategies Program. Then April, Karen's already mentioned, so it'd be Park Avenue with the, the work session to really look at the code language in early April, and then the second meeting would be the public hearing for Park Avenue. I forgot to mention Glenn is planning to be here the same night that you have, March 8, the same night you have the public meeting on the work program to start discussing this text amendment package. But again, it would be more, you know, sort of conceptual, what's on the list, getting your opinion on things, moving toward having a public hearing then in May on that. And then potentially doing the Housing Strategies Phase One Public Hearing, most likely in early June, because your second meeting in May is Memorial Day, so we wouldn't be meeting that night. So anyway, we'll send you this to you in writing, but the bottom line is I think you're, you're going to be pretty busy from late February into June. And I have not forgotten that I owe you a discussion on environmental regulations in the county. So we're going to figure out how to plug that in on one of these dates as well.
Great.
We don't have any applications from anyone though. There's nobody who's asked for a complant amendment zone change at the moment. There's, you know, there's really nothing that even seems very serious at this point. So it could be that we're spending all of our winter and spring talking about legislative stuff as opposed to site-specific applications.
Great.
Okay. How about the BCC? Anything going on there? Oh, gosh. So they passed the, the short-term, I can't remember if we ever had a report back to you. So the short-term rental regulations that you all considered, they did end up adopting the county code piece that was not before you, but we talked about it, right, with the registration and regulation. Those are slated to take effect July 1. In the meantime, they approved the zoning and development ordinance amendments that the sort of straightforward, you can do this amendments, which take effect on the 17th of this month and were just appealed on Thursday by Thousand Friends of Oregon. So stay tuned. Don't, don't quite know. They object to allowing short terminals in the EFU and Timber Zone. Have not seen really their legal arguments at this point. They raised the issue right before the board's hearing. We got a letter that day. And so I've seen it, but, you know, we haven't had, really had a chance to vet it at all. So that'll be kind of throwing that into some sort of confusion for a little while. So that's kind of it at this point with the board, other than we're trying to, you know, get in front of them for policy session about the work program in February and then we'll be going back to them on Park Avenue, as Karen mentioned in hopefully in, in February or March to report out on what we learned from the business and commercial property owners. Any other questions for Jennifer or staff?
I, I have one comment before we close up. Relating to Jennifer's earlier comments about cleaning out her closets. My, my American Legion post is holding clothing drives on Saturday, January 23rd and February 13th. And we're going to be collecting clothing and food, canned food and things like that for the folks that have been affected by COVID as well as the wildfires. So if you've got something you want to donate to clean out those closets so you can get new things, please come by and drop them off. That's 2146 Southeast Monroe Street in Milwaukee, Oregon. Thank you.
Good point, Michael.
Yeah, I like it.
Anybody else? Okay, I, I think we've done it. We've accomplished another meeting. Yay. We'll adjourn at 9:06.
We'll adjourn at 9:06.